Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting of October 16th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live by the work of John McDonald and Shrewsbury Media Connection, and it will be rebroadcast between now and our next meeting on October 30th. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to speak with the committee this evening, but if anyone wishes to do so in the future, please contact us, and we'd be happy to add you to the agenda. Next is chairperson and members' report. Does anyone have anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Nope.
I have an update. As you know, we've talked about the redistricting committee, and we recently voted some guiding principles. At this point, just as a reminder, we are forming, the school committee is forming, a redistricting committee to examine information, review options, and make recommendations to the committee for redistricting of the elementary school attendance zone boundaries for grades kindergarten through grade four. This committee will consist of two members of the school committee, myself and Mr. Wensky, superintendent Dr. Sawyer, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, Mr. Collins, two elementary school principals, and five parents, one representing each of the five elementary school communities of Beale, Coolidge, Floral, Patton, and Spring Street. To be eligible, applicants must have at least one child who will be attending kindergarten through grade four in the fall of 2021 when the new Beale school opens. Committee people who are interested in coming on the committee as parents will be expected to read and review relevant materials between meetings in order to be prepared for the committee's work, while they will represent their school community's parents' perspectives. Members of the redistricting committee will be expected to apply the school committee's guiding principles for the redistricting process to the development of options and recommendations in order to seek the best solution for the community as a whole. Meeting dates and times are not yet established, but applicants must be able to have a flexible schedule to be available for evening meetings. Initially, meetings will be held on an as-needed basis, but we believe the frequency of meetings will increase as options are developed and communicated. The work of the committee will begin later this fall and will conclude when a redistricting plan has been finalized in early 2021. The five parent representatives will be appointed by myself as chair of the committee. The school committee invites parents who are interested in serving for their current school community's representative to send a letter of interest via email to my school committee address at sfritz@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. You can find that on the school committee website. Applicants should indicate why they wish to serve in this important role, and they are asked to include any relevant experiences that they might feel are helpful to the committee in their work. So, thank you, and we hope to get a lot of interested parents to help us in this important redistricting committee. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz, and with your permission, I'll send that information out to the parent community via email, so people have that, and put the link to your email so that people will be able to respond. Connected also to the Beale School Project today, Mr. Collins and I, along with Mr. Girardi, the principal of Beale, Mr. Mizikar, the town manager, Ms. Snell from Public Buildings and Parks, were able to meet with the project team and representatives from the Mass School Building Authority onsite at the Beale School, where the new Beale School will be located, in the construction trailer where the representatives from the MSBA came out for what they call their "construction kickoff meeting", at the start of the, near the start of the construction phase. I'm pleased to report that everything continues to go well, as the building committee heard at their last meeting. We are coming in, all the numbers continue to come in under budget. The project is working on schedule. The Lake Street realignment and lowering is going according to plan, and according, should happen to reopen that street by mid-December, as is the plan. And they're already actually, they have forms up, and they're re-pouring concrete as early as tomorrow for some of the foundations of the building itself. It's very exciting. So, so far, the work has been going very, very well, according to our project management team. So, good news for the, for the community, as that project continues to evolve. Also wanted to just commend the Performing Arts Department at the high school. This week are the fall concerts at the high school. I had the opportunity to attend the treble choir and wind ensemble and mixed choir performance last night, which was excellent. Other groups are performing this evening, and congratulations to all those performers and to the faculty in the Performing Arts Department. And then earlier today, I know Ms. Fritz was able to come along with some of my colleagues. The unified basketball team kicked off their season with a game against Nishoba. There was a great crowd in attendance, lots of enthusiasm and energy, and it was the highlight of my day, and I'm sure it was for many others as well. And so, congratulations for another good start to our unified basketball program. And that is superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we will hear a report from the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee. If you guys would like to come forward. Our advisory, student advisory committee is five students who are elected by the student body, and Mr. Andrew Smith is a high school teacher and a long-serving faculty advisor for the SAC. Welcome. If you'd like to introduce yourselves, why don't you all get settled?
Can I just push this back slightly?
Sure.
Very gently.
Very gently. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia Pang, chairperson of the Student Advisory Committee, and I am here with the rest of SAC, and we are excited to share our first agenda of the year with you. Now, we'll go down the line and introduce ourselves.
My name is Nikki Tharam. I am a sophomore.
I'm Max Evers. I'm a junior.
I'm Abia Hassan. I'm a junior.
I'm David Lee, and I'm a junior.
The first item on our agenda tonight is start of the school year. Students began the 2019-2020 school year by welcoming the class of 2023 and engaging in new classes and after-school activities. Last spring, over 220 juniors and seniors applied to be members of the mentor volunteer program, which connects upperclassmen with incoming freshmen to provide them guidance. A hundred students were accepted to be MVPs this year, and on August 21st, they successfully ran freshman orientation. The class of 2023 experienced a smooth transition into high school and also had a special opportunity to learn how to get involved. During homeroom on September 24th and September 27th, SHS ran its first activity fair. Clubs and honor societies set up displays in the commons, and freshmen and transfer students could walk around to learn about the activities that interested them. After the fair, many club officers reported an influx of new members and were grateful for the opportunity to promote their group. The activity fair will likely run again in coming years and incorporate all grade levels. As Shrewsbury High School welcomed the new class of 2023, new classes and clubs were offered as well. SHS introduced classes in all departments, including global health, principles of biomedical engineering, exploring family history, and many more to provide for a broader range of academic opportunities. Extracurricular clubs, such as the Club of Rock, Girls Who Code, and many more, were also created and showcased this year. Through these new classes, students were able to define themselves in new and interesting ways.
Just last week, SHS Student Council held their Fall Leadership Summit. The theme for the summit and for our student council this year is "Be a Piece of the Puzzle." The activities reflected the words of Mrs. Satterfield, who spoke at the event. She instilled in the audience that the key to a good leadership is putting together a great team and a diverse team. Activities centered around a leadership league, where teams of student leaders engaged in competitions that centered around a specific aspect of leadership. Highlights included Cup Towers, the Colonial Game Show, and even a toilet paper mummy contest. Overall, it was a great success, and the students who attended enjoyed the opportunity and the experience.
The second item on our agenda is student life.
In addition to leadership opportunities, SHS students are learning about the college application process and dealing with crowding and schedule changes. Triple E has affected students by limiting how long and where they can practice, in turn, limiting the amount of actual improvement across teams. Many cross-country courses are closed, as the woods are unavailable for running. This is also why the adventure physical education course was closed, and in place of planned activities, they are restricted to the fieldhouse. It has also affected when sports games take place, and since they are all earlier, not many fans can come and enjoy them. Practice times also fluctuate heavily, making it harder for student athletes.
The first of four planned advisory periods at SHS occurred on Friday, September 14th, in between periods two and three. Other classes were shortened to a length similar to those during a seven-period day. Acting as a 45-minute extra period, teachers performed icebreakers and group activities with students on the topic of leadership. These activities included watching a TED Talk and filling out a worksheet with nearby classmates. Some students were appreciative of the advisory period, while some expressed dissatisfaction. Experiences varied from homeroom to homeroom, as teachers administered the activities of the advisory period in different ways. Is it a worthwhile addition to the school day? Only time will tell.
From August 5th through 8th and August 12th through 7th, 108 rising seniors attended application boot camp, where they received assistance on the Common App, review on their essays from admissions directors from nearby schools, and practice with interviews. Nearly all students who attended considered the program incredibly helpful. For seniors who could not attend application boot camp, a separate nuts and bolts night was run on September 17th to go over the same information. The event was well-attended, and students were especially appreciative of the breakout sessions that occurred afterwards, which allowed them to ask specific questions to their guidance counselors. On Thursday, October 3rd, a financial aid night was also hosted to further streamline the process. Early application deadlines are approaching, but the class of 2020 has been well-equipped.
With over 1,900 students, moving through the hallways and cafeteria can often play out like a traffic jam. Approximately 633 students are on each lunch on days five, six, and seven. On days one through four, the value is slightly less. Remaining students, approximately 100 of them, go to an overflow lunch with American Studies. Several additional tables are also positioned near the main lobby to further help with crowding. In an effort to alleviate crowding issues, Assistant Principal Mr. O'Connell utilized a different approach to lunch schedules. Where whole hallways would be dismissed at a time for lunch in previous years, now such assignments are often specific to the room. This unorthodox arrangement intends to avoid crowding when teachers eat lunch in department areas as well. Some students found new lunch schedules to be confusing at the start of the year, but have by now gotten used to them. The hallways remain as crowded as ever, with little noticeable change. Indeed, facilitating more efficient travel for 1,900 students traveling from class to class is a daunting challenge. It remains to be seen if crowding at school can be further alleviated.
The third item on our agenda tonight is SHS events. Our students have always been incredibly proud of their school and do their best to give back. This year, we started strong with events that celebrated our spirit for both SHS and the larger community. As in previous years, numerous Shrewsbury High School students were involved in the two-day event, "The Spirit of Shrewsbury." Through this event, various clubs, such as the robotics team and speech team, and sports teams such as volleyball and field hockey, had the opportunity to participate. The Spirit of Shrewsbury Fall Festival was at Oak Middle School on Saturday, the 28th, and promoted delicious food and games to play. This festival was an overall success, but the parade on Sunday, the 29th, was what caught the eyes of many SHS students. This was a way that students were able to show the whole town of Shrewsbury our pride and enthusiasm. In addition to the parade, there were many smaller events around the area, such as the Knights of Columbus 5K, which many SHS students also participated in. Without a doubt, the Spirit of Shrewsbury Fall Festival was a great success that perfectly demonstrated our diverse community and got us all ready for the upcoming year.
On September 14th, years of fundraising and a summer of construction culminated in the dedication of the new athletic facility at SHS, officially known as the David J. Adams Memorial Field at Central One Federal Credit Union Stadium. The new fields were a result of generous donations, both corporate and private. Students and adults alike are excited to host more frequent games, and ironically, it rained on the day of the dedications. With the old grass field, students used to not be able to play shortly after rain, but with the new turf, SHS football was able to play in less than an hour. The dedication ceremony consisted of a speech from Superintendent Sawyer, along with a video program produced by the members of the advanced television class at SHS. Overall, the dedication served as the end of a long fundraising campaign and the beginning of a new chapter in Shrewsbury's history.
On 9/11, many students had the opportunity to get various volunteering experiences around the community. Events ranged from helping out at the Grafton Community Harvest to the Be Like Britain Foundation. Eventually, all of the students were able to gather at Grafton Street School to donate school supplies collected in front of Staples by student volunteers in the weeks previous. This was all done to commemorate a day such as 9/11 for the terrible things that occurred and in turn, make it into a day of giving and service to others. In the future, Mr. Buzidlow is hoping to make 9/11 a school-wide day of service.
This concludes our presentation for the evening. We are now happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Jason?
First of all, thank you all for the work that you do. I actually was just wondering if you could expand a little bit on that last item, the 9/11 day of service. I was wondering, was that a club or an activity at the school that organized that? Was that a group of students? I'm just curious what the genesis of that was. It's a fantastic effort.
Ms. Satterfield and the Community Service and Leadership Board kind of headed it, but what they did is they sent out a poll on Schoology, where they asked which students wanted to volunteer on this day, and from there, they used a lottery to pick students who wanted to volunteer on that day, and it counted as a field trip day for them. And they were able to go to different places, help out in different ways, and then eventually come together at the Grafton Street School, where they don't have too many things and aren't as lucky as some of the kids that live in Shrewsbury. And we were able to donate school supplies to them and see what it was to give in the world. And students previously, even before school started, had sat in front of Staples for a couple of hours on weekends. I know I personally did some of that. And we just handed out flyers and asked parents walking in to buy school supplies if they also wanted to help buy supplies for students who were in need.
Excellent. Thank you.
Do you know how many students participated in the Day of, I'm calling Day of Caring, think of United Way, but in this 9/11 service day?
I can't say for sure.
Twenty to thirty, I would say. Twenty to thirty, yeah.
A good amount.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mr. Buzidlow saying forty in the background.
Forty.
And when I, when you were talking about that, corporations participate in the United Way Day of Caring, another fall event, and the corporation I work for, a lot of businesses, we go out and we do community service, and it's such, it is a really good day. You're out of the office, you guys are out of school, but you really get to work maybe doing something that you would not necessarily be accustomed to. So, I think that's a great program to start. Another question on the activities fair, you said that was the first time?
Yes, this is the first time that it's been run.
And with this, so many new freshmen coming in, I think that's such a great idea to focus on, this is what we do, these are the clubs, because maybe when you're first, or new to the school, you don't know. So, is it well-attended? Do you think it?
Yeah, so we just had freshman classes come down during homeroom. So, we had half of the classes come down one day, and then the other half another day, and they could just walk around. It was like, it's like a typical, kind of like a college fair or a camp fair, where you have all the tables set up, and you can walk in a circle, and they just got to see all the clubs. Clubs were handing out flyers or talking, or had like signup lists, Schoology codes.
Excellent. Great. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. Terrific report. Welcome, and we're glad you're going to be serving this capacity this year. Five of our certainly are outstanding students. I also want to reiterate how proud I was of the students and for putting together and participating in the day of service on 9/11. I had a chance to stop by St. Anne's that day and see the students who were contributing there, and they were having a great experience, and the folks at St. Anne's and the food pantry and the thrift shop there were greatly appreciative of the work they were able to do during that time, as I know the other sites felt similarly. Also want to mention, you know, some of the pieces here in terms of, I appreciate when you raise the frustrations and the issues that you're experiencing. Obviously, the building is only so big, and I do appreciate that Mr. O'Connell and some of his work and the other members of the high school administration in terms of trying to figure out ways to alleviate pressure on lunch periods or travel in the hallways to the greatest extent they can. There's no question that it's a tight fit. There's 1,900-plus students in that building. And we'll continue to work on ways we can try to mitigate that over time and appreciate the patience, and I think the students do a tremendous job when you're there. And classes change. It's busy, but it's, people are very respectful, I believe, the way they move around the building. That goes to the culture and the climate of the school. Similarly, in terms of the advisories, I'll be curious to know how that goes over time and how those, I know we're kind of taking baby steps this year with four of them. I know that's something Mr. Buzidlow and his team have been looking at for a while, and we'll have to see how that plays out. But, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained, and I think the more we can find ways for kids to connect with the school community and make sure we're finding opportunities for kids to do that is a good thing, and we'll just have to make sure we figure out the best way to get it right. And then finally, you mentioned the application boot camp piece. Not only, I've heard about that for many years and heard great things about it, and this is the first year that I've had the opportunity to experience that as a parent. And I would concur that it is, it's, I can only imagine where my senior would be if she didn't have that opportunity, and for something that was very reasonably priced, to have the amount of support and just the nuts and bolts piece of it, as well as Nuts and Bolts Night, which I was able to attend. And so, I know later on, Mr. Buzidlow and Ms. Wen from the school counseling department will be presenting about last year's senior class and what they're doing this year. But there's some information the school committee has about the various things that the counseling department does to help students prepare for the college application experience and decision-making and so forth. And there's good work that's done, and we're very pleased, and we're always looking to make that better. So, it's, I appreciate that you raised that issue. But again, appreciate your perspective. We look forward to having you back several other times this year, and your leadership is much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Great report. We look forward to hearing from you throughout the year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay, next, we are going to have a homework feedback report. One of the goals in the district in 2018, in 2022, strategic priorities and goals is to review and adapt feedback and homework systems in order to implement effective research-based practices that enhance learning and building stronger partnerships with families. The process toward this goal started this past spring by gathering information from our school communities through Thought Exchange. And Ms. Clouder, along with a Thought Exchange representative, who will be joining us live through video link, will summarize the themes that emerged, so welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for your time today and your kind attention. It's one thing to do some new learning, it's another to do it on camera. So, if it doesn't go well, it's all on me and my new learning. If it does, it's to the genius of Brian LaRue and the very capable teams at Thought Exchange that are coordinating in order to bring both a presentation for me and also a live conversation with them. So, I just wanted to set some context before we have that live conversation and remind everyone, because we've tackled this project in different phases, kind of where we are. So, we started collecting some data via Thought Exchange last spring. We had two different exchanges. We had an adult exchange with staff and also parents, and then we had a student exchange with our youngest students being in grade four all the way up through grade 12. And so, we didn't have time at the end of last year to really thoughtfully review that data, so we're grounding everybody in what that data says. We're looking at what the current research on homework is, and then we're thinking about how we would revise our existing policy based on what we know about the research base and in an effort to include grades nine to 12 in that policy. I think when we say district goal, I want to be clear that this is, it's a district initiative, but it's not a top-down process. And part of having this conversation with the community and with each stakeholder group is really learning from each group what it is important in terms of the components of our policy. And so, it's an iterative process, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we'll be having ongoing conversations, not just with school councils, but with leadership teams across the district in order to do this well. So, why now? Well, in some ways, it's not unusual for us to do this work, because we always review policies periodically. The last time we reviewed this one is the first time the Patriots won the Super Bowl, so this one's really overdue. And yet, there is something kind of timely about this in the sense that our students are telling us that it's really important. When we look at the data shared at the Wellness Advisory Council, when we look at the data shared through the Thought Exchange, you'll see that students are reporting really high levels of stress. And when you peel back those layers and ask where the sources of stress are, homework comes up for students. So, it's a timely topic across the nation. Shrewsbury's certainly not unique in that relationship between stress and homework. But it's also time to kind of look at our homework policy again. And you have in your packet kind of a sense of a timeline of the process, but this is a visual that just represents that. So, we've been collecting data, both looking at what the research says in the field and also what our stakeholders are telling us. We are going to launch a community discussion about that data with district leaders who have looked at it, the school committee tonight, with students, educators, and parents as part of the school council, joint council meeting. And then from there, we'll develop a draft, and then again, it's an iterative process. We'll seek feedback on the draft, and then we'll go forward. So, I want to just emphasize the fact that we're kind of stretching between this collecting data, which we already did, but we haven't really looked at it, and then looking at the data against the research in order to frame that policy. And what do we hope to learn? Well, again, we hope to learn what's working, because there might be some components of our policy that are really successful, and we keep them. We hope to see what's not. So, we have a policy that's been in place for a long time, K-8. Does our practice match our policy? I think that's a really important question to ask. And then, you know, we have to consider the idea of what role should homework play today. There are definitely things that students today are grappling with that are new, since the Patriots won that first Super Bowl, and they play a role in our decision-making about how we craft a policy to serve those needs. So, I just wanted to show you, because I think this is really interesting, kind of what an exchange looks like from beginning to end. And you can see on the left, those are individual people and their thoughts, and then how that grows in terms of what it looks like. So, if this works, and I click on this. Let's see if I can find my mouse. Yes, I can. I just think this is really interesting perspective. So, this is the question that's posed. Those are the first people kind of posting their thoughts. As five thoughts are shared, that becomes kind of a conversation, and then you start to see these connections form around the conversations. And you start to see, as we play this forward, I'm just going to pause it there. How different groups form around different issues. And part of what we're going to do when we talk to Thought Exchange is hear a little bit about what those conversations tell us across stakeholder groups. The next thing I want to do is introduce you to Rita McLeod, who we're going to hope can talk to us. Hi, Rita.
Hi, Amy.
Okay, I'm going to turn you around. And she's going to drive for a little while. This is the school committee.
Hello, school committee.
Part of us.
Can you angle it down a little bit? She's kind of looking at the ceiling. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see a good group of you. Yeah, thank you very much for inviting us to talk today about the Thought Exchange that your district ran this springtime around homework. And you nearly crashed the system. You had such good participation. It was a very, very hot topic. And I'm going to share my screen, walk you through some stuff, and then, you know, make sure there's space to answer any questions you may have about either like the technology or what some of this means, or a bit of a deeper dive. Amy, let me know. I've got about 10 minutes, 15 minutes, so feel free to let me know when it's time to exit the stage, okay? Because I can talk.
Will do.
Okay, great. I'll just get my screen queued up here, and away we go. So I'll probably pick up where Amy left off with this hairball, also known as a thought graph, which is a visual representation of, I think this is the conversation that the
High school.
High school. Student had, students had. And it shows you like all the connections that were happening during that conversation, and the most important thoughts or the highest rated thoughts were trending up on the right-hand And I'm going to just move over and show you. We're actually going to start with a student conversation. So the question that students were asked was slightly different than the questions that we asked adults. We made the question nice and accessible. How can we make your homework experience better? And it was broken down into three large kind of conversation groups. There was a conversation for students fourth grade and up in elementary school, and there's middle school students and high school conversation. And, you know, this was amazing. You had about 7,500 thoughts shared, and thoughts were rated, on average, about 13 times. So it's like every thought was seen and rated and considered by other students. So they had lots of traction. I'm going to just go down and have a quick peek at demographics. We were able to look, and this is in your packages, what grade level the students were associated with. And when we use Thought Exchange technology, we're really looking at what's most important to the different demographic groups. So you're not going to get inside in like, what did the fourth graders say? We're going to learn what's most important to fourth graders, or what's most important to 12th, students in the 12th grade. So there's the breakdown by grade level. And the other question that was asked was what school do you go to to get a sense of school affiliation? You can see, you know, about 40% of participants were with the Shrewsbury High School. And again, this stuff is in your in your package. I just wanted to show you how we move from the high level down to the details here. So then we have a quick look at some of the themes that came up, and then I'm also going to show you some differences. But with the themes, I can fit this on my screen. Some of these themes are highlighted in the handout, but we take all of the thoughts, and they're categorized into common themes or bucketed so that they're easier to understand. So the largest theme, when we look at star rating, like where are people giving out five stars, four stars on a thought? It's around Alex, if you're talking to students. Click into this and have a look at the themes. And Alex was really about, it's not balanced. So you can scroll through each theme and get a sense of what are the questions or what are the thoughts that came up around Alex. So from the student's perspective, this is the theme that got the highest ratings. The next highest theme was around testing and application time. This is pretty straightforward. It's like, please don't give us homework while we're having exams. You know, if you're going to give us homework, find the right time to give us homework. This is rated really high. If anyone has a question, I can't see you right now, but please feel free just to ask. So what we're seeing here is that, you know, this thought about biology was given a star rating of 4.4. It was rated by 16 people. Almost everybody gave it a five, and a few people gave it a four. So that's how that works. And thoughts are scrambled up when they're people enter their ideas into Thought Exchange, and there's an algorithm in the background mixing them up to make sure that thoughts are rated around the same number of times. It's not like the first idea shared is always the first thought rated, to try to make sure that, you know, there's equal voice. We'll just move and look at a couple more themes here. So the purpose of work, and this came up in the adult conversation as well. 29 thoughts, 4.7 star score. Please don't give us busy work. Make the homework relevant and intentional. Lots of thoughts around this. And Amy was talking a bit around the correlation between mental health, anxiety, and students feeling too busy. So there was definitely a theme that emerged around mental health. And again, highly rated. And we're not seeing any threes, twos, or ones here. So because this is a student conversation, these thoughts were entered by students and rated by students. And as the themes go across here, the district has a deeper dive into every theme. We probably don't have time today to go across all of them, but if there is one that's really jumping out at people and you want me to touch on, that's maybe not in your packet, just let me know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Yeah. Hi, my name's Lindsay. And you can see me. From this graphic, it appears that even though you point out that Alex was sort of the most, not commented on, the most.
Highest rated.
Highest rated, there we go. There doesn't seem to be a huge distribution here. Like, all of these things are really highly rated? And so is that they're all important, or is that somewhat related to the algorithm that kind of makes sure all the thoughts get? Help me understand that.
Yes. No, it's the first thing. It's like, when you're asking students what's important here, they're rating a lot of these things pretty high. So on average, thoughts around Alex come out at 4.8. And when we're looking at this other theme over here of making homework engaging, it's 4.1. So the spread is not very big. You know, in some conversations, we'll see low-rated themes, like themes that are three, three and a half. You know, meh, doesn't really matter to everybody. This isn't the case with the homework conversation. We can also change it just to mix things up, and we can look at the volume of thoughts. So this is the quantity. So how many, if you want to look at the quantity of thoughts, it's breaks and family time. So there's the most thoughts are entered about breaks and family time, but it's not the highest rated category, for lack of a better word. That would have been Alex. And then in breaks and family time, you've got over 100 thoughts. Rated high. Does that help explain?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
You're welcome. And there's so many different ways of looking at the results. It's a very big conversation. So it's something that we're working with the district to like help you guys break it down in a way that's meaningful for you. So if I follow along with the student conversation here, I wanted to also show you some differences. This is where it gets interesting, or more interesting. Go back to my notes here. Differences, students, elementary school. Okay. This should be right. Okay. So we have another algorithm working that can, you know, you don't have to make an account, but it can look at your IP address, and it can kind of go, hey, wait a minute. The person who's participating from this IP address tends to rate thoughts similarly to these other 139 people. Like, if we threw a thought at anybody in Group A, they'd probably give it the same rating. They're pretty agreeable around these topics. Then we found this other group of people, we'll call them Group B, they think kind of like the exact opposite. You throw a thought at them, they're going to rate it a different way. And so sometimes those differences are pretty minor, and sometimes they're pretty big. And in your conversation around homework, there were, you know, differences of opinion or differences of sentiment around some topics. But there was just a few where it was really noticeable. Noticeable because, you know, in this particular group, Group A here, or sorry, Group B, almost half the participants were from the Walter J. Patton School. Whereas in this group, Group A, just about 10% of the participants were from that school. So the Group B people have a lot of Walter J. Patton participants. And then when you look at what they're kind of circling up around, that might, you know, make more meaning to you than it would to me. So Group A thinks that it is, they rated these thoughts really high. They're like, no homework, no homework, no homework, no homework, less homework, no homework. Then you have your other group, Group B, which we now know has a lot of Walter J. Patton participants in it. They're like, no, we rate that low. We want homework, or we think homework is important. I want to know who, like, the Walter J. Patton group is, by the way. The children that are pro homework.
Not mine.
But you have that group. So go give them a high five, right? Or whatever's happening. But yeah, they're. But then the Group B students, they're the group that makes up Group B, they're saying, yeah, you can give us homework, but give us homework that's really relevant, right? You know? Don't rush us. Give us homework that's really relevant. The Group A kids, they don't want homework, and they're also kind of just rating anything around this pretty low right now.
If I could just ask a clarifying question with regard to Group A and Group B, just trying to understand the delineation between the two. Does each topic or thought have its own Group A and Group B? Or is that a consistent grouping throughout?
That's a great question. So the computer's looking for basically thoughts and groups of thoughts that people are coming together around. And so sometimes you're going to see a really clear pattern, like homework, no homework.
So it is, it is, the groupings are done by topic?
Yeah. It's not necessarily just one thought. It can be a few thoughts. So this one does seem to be, you know, a definite theme around homework, no homework. And then over here, you know, a couple of thoughts around making it more relevant, not rushed. And then what I always love to point out to people and think is a great starting point on a controversial or, you know, important topic is common ratings high. This is where both groups agree. They love the packet. I have a second grader, and he would love a packet coming home, too. You can see, you know, throughout the week what's due and when to send it all back so we don't lose it. Homework across all subjects and make homework fun. So you can look at these differences that show up in the reports that you have and that Amy has the background dashboard for. And you can see where you've got these kind of polarized thoughts and then where the groups come together.
So in your packet, that's pulled out underneath the differences, and you can see the main topics where there's two groups of opinions across demographics.
Yeah. So I'll move along and kind of do a quick overview of the other Thought Exchange conversation, if that's okay? We doing okay for time?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So then we had the adult conversation, and we asked a much harder question. What are some things you would like us to consider as we review our existing district homework policies? Just kidding, it's not that much harder. But it was a great question. You had, again, we broke it down into three conversations. There was a conversation for parents, staff, community members, guard, and who were associated with the elementary school and middle school and high school. And this shows you all of the results kind of rolled up together, and then we can de-aggregate it as we need to. And so it's, you know, 1,300 people participated, 1,400 thoughts were shared, and again, 30,000 ratings, which is great. Yeah, it means the thoughts were rated around 20 times each. So with the adults, they're really rating and really considering and learning from each other. And I just wanted to show you quickly in your packets, the demographic breakdowns. You know, we did have multi-language enabled, so there were a few people that participated in languages other than English. And 75% of participants were parents and guardians. And then again, we had the breakdown by the school that they're most closely associated with. Asking specifically, if you have more than one child, select the school of your youngest child, with the thinking behind that being, this is the child that's going to be in the school system for the longest, and, you know, we want your lens on where you're thinking around homework for the youngest child. Awesome. And then I will show you some of the themes that popped out in the adult exchange. Awesome. So this should be in your package, and we're talking again at the star score, like the highest average star scores with the top rated themes. And again, pretty consistent, 4.2 for the highest theme, down to 4.0 for the lowest theme. And again, you could look at size of conversation. So a heck of a lot of thoughts on relevance to classwork, but that's rated 4.1. If we change it around and look at the star score, we're all the way up to 4.2 with purpose of work. So you can kind of balance those two views out. And so if we look at purpose of work, make sure that homework has a clear educational purpose. That was loud and clear from the conversation. Another one that was really important, assignment posting due dates. This one. People really liked having stuff posted on Schoolology. And that was super helpful. Breaks and family time. Trying to strike that balance and that there were certain times when it would be a good idea to not have homework. Any questions about this stuff?
No.
Okay.
As a matter of someone who looks at these things regularly, should we be paying more attention to the star rating or the number of comments? Because you focus on the star ratings, but they still seem so consistent. I don't, that doesn't seem as helpful to me, that like everything is important.
I know, I know. Everything is important, right?
Does that make us?
When I think of the Thought Exchange like this, like my takeaway would be, you have so many people weighing in and rating that you almost have guiding principles here or important considerations, and that the details, like whatever policy changes you may or may not make, as long as they align with where you know you have, you know, thousands of people participate and indicate what's important to them. And it kind of rolls up to a high-level theme, which is the nice thing about theming in Thought Exchange. You can kind of move away from like a particular thought or a particular idea to, you know, purpose of work is really important. And I think you can look at the number of thoughts rated, which would be more like a traditional survey when you get back, like, you know, most of the surveys said classwork, relevance to classwork. What you're missing is how other people feel about that. So that's where the star score comes in. It's like, how do you feel about other ideas that have been shared?
Thank you.
Yeah, I hope that makes sense. It's hard to kind of explain it sometimes when we don't have a ton of time.
Hi, Rita. This is Joe Sawyer, the Superintendent of Schools. Thanks for the presentation. Along the same, to expand on Lindsay's question, in terms of, these are themes that emerged from the data that Thought Exchange put together and associated certain thoughts and those ratings. Would it also be fair to say that there were lots of other thoughts that may have been shared that did not get any traction and therefore wouldn't really be a? There are other things that are not there because they weren't rated highly. And so maybe the contrast with a more traditional survey where you, you know, every comment may get equal rating in just a list of comments, as opposed to this allows to see what the participants actually thought was relevant and important.
That's right. Yep. It's kind of like you're getting a sense of the voice of the crowd instead of just the loudest voice. It's awesome. So I'm trying to scroll through here to like page 20 of your thoughts. As you go down in the Thought Exchange, moving from highest to lowest rated, you will have thoughts that didn't get a 4.0 star rating, thoughts that were rated much less highly. And sometimes that's because it's a thought that was poorly written or confusing or gibberish. And a lot of times, it's because it's a thought that's not agreed on a lot. I'm going to scroll me to the end. And we theme a huge exchange like this, we'll go down to, we'll probably usually rate like, theme the top 50% of thoughts. And we theme a huge exchange like this, we'll go down to, we'll probably usually rate like, theme the, the top fifty percent of thoughts. Usually what we find is the more, uh, theming that you do, you end up having thoughts that are repetitive, and they just continue to fit into those same categories. They're just worded differently, or they're a little bit harder to understand.
Can I ask a question?
On iPad or paper. Who is this child?
Can I, uh, ask a question? I just am trying to think of this format a little bit, and, um, what's occurring to me is a certain kind of person likely participates in these surveys, a certain kind of parent, a certain kind of student, that may have organizational skills and planning skills that are not uniform through the district. And so they may favor certain approaches or questions. For example, give me a week's worth of homework on Monday, and I'll plan everything on my own. That takes a certain kind of personality. And there's another kind of personality where if you did that, um, they wouldn't get the job done by Friday, and you wouldn't know about it until Monday. Um, and so there may be instances in which the method by which we are setting people's opinions selects for a group which may lead us down a path that may be harmful to those who don't, uh, participate because their personalities are so different, that that approach, uh, actually is not what they need.
Yep, yep, for sure, and so, you know, we're trying to be as accessible as possible with the Thought Exchange question, and with, um, providing time for students to participate, and, you know, promoting it for the community to understand why the Thought Exchange is happening and how it can help. And then when people are working with the results, like your group, it's important to come in and look at how, you know, so here, let's go back to that packet thought I was talking about, you know, that my child would love a packet, and what we can see is, you know, there were, of the people who participated, most people gave it five stars. There was a couple of people who gave it two stars, right? And then you come down here and you look at homework packets, as rated by the middle school. There is a few people giving that a one star. And so that's where that differences tool that's been, um, highlighted and put in your packages is really important because it shows you where you might have a thought that, um, there is a difference in opinion around it. That some people think it's a really good idea, and some people think it's not a good idea at all, or it wouldn't be helpful to them. So before kind of going out with like, okay, we have the most thoughts around doing this, we should just go ahead and do it. It's understanding that there is a group that, you know, maybe we should consider that this isn't the best approach for them, and to try to look at like, what works well for everybody. And if we do need to, um, make a decision where we know a group of people are going to, um, not be satisf- as satisfied as possible, um, how can we mitigate that, or how do we communicate it? So that's kind of how the differences can help you work with the data that you've got. Yeah, Amy, how am I doing? I feel like I'm probably close.
Yeah.
Do you see any other questions perhaps? I'll just, I'll just piggyback on, on Dr. McGee's, uh, question. In terms of the, cause I, one issue with surveying, of course, is like, who's, who self-selects to actually participate? Uh, and that definitely is something we have to consider relative to parents, and oftentimes people who participate have strong feelings one way or another. And of course, we're seeing that with some of the differences in opinion on different issues among the parent and, and educator, adult, uh, exchange. Um, as far as the student exchange, it's a pretty significant majority of all the students who took it, cause they took it at school, uh, and if you look at the numbers, uh, you know, in terms of how many fourth graders and fifth graders and so on, it's, it's, uh, looking pretty close to eighty-plus percent, if not more than that. Um, so I, I think in terms of, uh, uh, the universe of kids who took the survey, it's pretty, um, substantial. Um, and so that, that's a plus, I think, in terms of the sample. But, uh, being able to drill down, I think, is something that helps us in terms of looking at different people, look at the, the different, uh, different pieces.
Yep. And on that difference that Rita was just showing you, where there's those two groups with the overprotective educational bubble. Um, so we really should let kids struggle with homework, and then we should really reconsider and lessen homework. Um, that was an example in your packet where you see a real difference in the demographics, the demographic difference is notable. So Group A-
Good point, thanks.
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, you've got it, I, um, I was so conscious of being over time, I, so Group A is made up of, um, mostly parents, and Group B is mostly staff. So here's, uh, some differences by the different demographic groups. So you've got mostly staff, highly rating the educational bubble thought, and lowly rating the limiting the homework, and that the parents, guardians are the con- the flip of that.
But there are other differences where the demographics are roughly equal. There's just two different schools of thought.
Yeah, which was, which was unique in your, in this Thought Exchange, that there was not a lot of, um, different sentiments really clearly associated to a demographic, like it wasn't like, all the teachers think this way, and all the parents think that way, and there's this clear line between, you know, how everyone thinks. There's, there's mixed, mixed demographic information, and there's, it's all available here. So with the exception of a couple areas that we're highlighting to you, um, in, in your handout, people can feel differently about, uh, things like setting limits on homework and overprotecting education bubbles. And there's usually a mix, a cross-section of participants, with the exception of, of this area, and the one in, um, the Walter J. Patton School, those kids.
Do we have a hint as to how homework is presented, or how it is, uh, you know, why, why do you think Patton is different?
I think that's a really good question to ask the Patton community, you know, what is it, is homework more consistently organized there? One of the themes that emerges as a concern, um, that's a common concern is consistency. And we talked about that as a leadership group, we first had to wrap our heads around, when we say consistency, what do we mean? Consistency of assignments, consistency of format, consistency from teacher to teacher, consistency across the grade, or consistency with our policy. So delving into that a little bit and thinking, you know, what did, when we answer that question about what's working and what's not, it's, that's certainly a really good conversation starter, cause I wouldn't have said that any one school was going to stand out, you know, before seeing this result.
Well, parents don't choose Patton, and so, you know, one has to think of the staff being behind this.
Yep.
Just, um, to jump in, I, I, this is a very interesting, certainly, presentation, um, a comment, also a concern, and maybe request that might be a bit burdensome, so I apologize in advance. Let me start by saying, what I like about this survey, uh, and the Thought Exchange format is that this is certainly a much more comprehensive level of survey than we, than a, a traditional sort of poll, or a yes or no, or a kind of a common rating type, uh, uh, survey tool, like a Survey Monkey or something like that. And I certainly appreciate that obviously the breadth and depth of the information we're able to capture here is much more significant. On the flip side of that, interpreting that information is obviously a, a bit more complex. And sort of the, the obnoxious request I, I have is I, I would actually be interested in looking through sort of an unfettered list of the comments offered. I understand that that's gonna be significant, I, for example, one of the examples that showed up, it was something like twenty-nine pages of continuous comments. I would be interested in looking at it that way for a couple of reasons. You, you know, I, I understand that it's designed to sort of aggregate things at a high level. Because there is so much consistency, as Ms. Heffernan pointed out, you know, some of the more important things are all sort of landing in the same rating. I'm sort of more interested in looking down into the detail. I'm also a bit concerned, I understand the way the system is organized, that clarity in communication, and the way something is written can play a big role in whether an idea caught on, and I would certainly be concerned with inadvertently missing the concerns of maybe adults who, for whom English is a second language.
Yep.
Um, who may, may communicate, or even somebody who didn't write a full sentence but wrote a shorthand sentence. I would be a little concerned about some of that getting lost in the weeds, so I, I certainly appreciate the greater level of detail. But as, as cumbersome and involved as it may be, I would actually be interested in sort of, sort of the ability just to kinda scroll through.
Oh, yeah, and it's available, like the-
Yeah, it's actually not that hard to do. In fact, when we looked at it with the high school leadership team, I gave them the top thoughts by subgroup, that handout, instead of trying to look at the theming. Because I think it's also really helpful to do your own sorting as you're looking through those, and saying, okay, what do you see as the themes, okay, well, here's what came up algorithmically.
I wanna piggyback on Jason Con- Jason's comments, because as we were, as I was looking at it and as we're going through it tonight, I look at a lot of forensic accounting reports at work, which is a lot of numbered, I know, it's so exciting. Uh, a lot of, uh, numbers, but there's a lot of verbiage. And, you know, we go through these multi-fifty, sixty-page reports, and there's a, a summary at the end to help that reader really delve in. And how does that come into play in something like this, so much here? So for someone looking at this from the outside, how do they come to, these are the high-level themes with a little more clarity?
So are you asking Rita to tell you how Thought Exchange does it, or how we would look at-
Is there, is there, how, I don't know if Thought Exchange does it, or then when we get that material, do we do it? How does that come, how does that final product?
Yeah, that-
Go, go ahead, you take, go ahead.
That's a great question. So, you know, we, our goal is to, is to be objective and to just roll up the information, um, and present it back to the district, and try our hardest to synthesize it into, into buckets that are manageable for people to understand, as well as like, like, it was asked earlier to be able to have that full data set available for a deeper dive. So, um, most of the clients that I work with now are working in, I'm just gonna show you this one area here, are working in this thing called the auto-thema, where it's like, the homework committee would get together and go, okay, let's theme this exchange ourselves. Let's go and go like, what are the quick wins, like the low-hanging fruit, what's, you know, absolutely essential to work on? And let's make categories that are gonna make sense to us, because we're the closest to the data, right? And then, you know, you're not changing the thoughts, you're not editing anything, you're just kinda bucketing it in a way that works for you or works to share publicly. When, um, we are, we did this theming for, for the district with, with help from Amy, based on, um, you know, we're using keyword search, where, you know, we've got a team of people that do this work, which is just like, kinda curating and pulling the thoughts together. Um, but there is a way you can just kinda go and play around and do this yourselves, and that can be, it's probably the most beneficial in terms of like, group learning, because you're really close to the data, but it is heavier lift in terms of like, your energy and your time to do that work. Um, so that kinda answers your question a bit.
Yes, thank you.
If I could actually dovetail on that, because it's similar to, you know, I'm, I was also sort of thinking, you know, where's the executive summary? And it's similar, that actually kinda relates to why I was interested sort of, paradoxically, in looking at all the detail, because one of the things that I think is coming across with this distribution right here, there aren't necessarily stark trends. I think of a summary of a very long report sort of highlighting the obvious, and what I'm, what I'm certainly seeing in this snapshot is we have a lot of people who are expressing the same concerns, we have a lot of people rating the same ideas, similar. So what, what's also possible here is that there isn't necessarily a lot of obvious, um, things that stand out, or at least in relation to one another. And that sort of feeds into my, my desire to sort of look at everything a little bit more specifically, cause I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure the trends here are much more than, there are a lot of thoughts that everybody is, is rating very highly. And even when we scrolled through earlier, some of the thoughts were getting rated lower, you, you saw similar thoughts, but they were just being phrased differently.
Differently, right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely a conversation, we have a lot of, um, people feeling strongly, and, and a lot of agreement, which usually is a pretty good thing. And you can also go in, if you wanted to, and, you know, we could talk to Amy about this later, and another thing that I sometimes do is, you know, instead of having this many themes, which is a lot, you wanna get it down to like, a number like, four, or five, or six, that you can really, you know, work with. You can come in and you can do your executive summary, like a story and a sentence, which is like, this is what we see in this theme, this is why we think we're seeing it, and this is how we're gonna action it. And just, you know, different ways to kind of like, pull the results together. And then you can also go right back out to the, um, to the individual thought level. So if we were kind of facilitating this and had more time and it wasn't an evening, kind of meeting, we would probably get people to like, start talking to each other about like, what comes up for you when you see this large of a conversation around homework policy, and, um, what's top of mind for you, and what are some themes you're seeing emerging, and getting the working group that's working on the results to, to start to kind of plan next steps. So then you're almost like, re-synthesizing what the community's told you is important. Yeah, that's, I feel like I'm taking up way too much of your time tonight.
I think it's been very helpful, Rita.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so yeah, just let me know, Amy, if you want help with any more results sharing, and, uh, it was really nice to meet you guys.
Thanks Rita.
Uh, thank you.
Appreciate dialing in.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
Me too.
Amy, I'm not sure she mentioned her, where's Rita, right now?
She's in Canada.
Okay.
Yeah, she's actually traveling on the road to work with the school district, and she dialed in. Fortunately for us, the time zones work. But she's lovely, and, uh, she's just one of a team of people that have been working to kinda make the technology piece work, and then also talking about, so what are the next steps? Because obviously, they do lots of exchanges across, you know, the country and, and also in Canada, and so they're a helpful resource, not only in kind of looking at the data, but then thinking about, so, how do people do this? Or how am I going to get more participation? And she said, well, you really need to make a video. And I thought, okay, so the reason that, that launched with a video initially was because they were thinking, we see more participation rates if you can have a personal why message. So, let me go back to here.
Well, our technology worked wonderfully well. I, I don't recall a video conference going as soon as we, yeah.
Round of applause for Brian, he's amazing.
This was great.
That's true.
So essentially, I just wanted to remind everybody, you know, we're looking at the top thoughts from all three different groups. And so as we talked about this with district leaders, they can look at their data from their school. So like Patton looking at it and answering that question would be really good for students. Thoughts by group, what are the top student thoughts, what are the top elementary student thoughts? Um, and then thinking a little bit about, okay, so how do we make sense of those thoughts? Because I do think there's some information here, but it's not all of the information that we need. And I think that's why, you know, when I think about this slide, you know, that community discussion in the middle is so important, because I think we need discussion to make sense of the data, and then we need discussion to emerge, what are our priorities based on what we're seeing in the data? And then we have to think a little bit about, so how does that manifest itself in a policy? And there's some really strong opinions about, um, different components of what should be in a policy and what shouldn't, and whether that's appropriate across levels. So those are really important conversations to have, and I think the idea is to frame it as an opportunity to have a conversation, as opposed to, this is a problem to be solved. Because if you frame it as a problem to be solved, then people perceive those difference, those places where there's differences, it's like, I won and I lost. And I think it's more around, okay, where, where are some common agreements? And when you look at the disparity, for example, at the high school between the staff and the parents that answered this exchange, um, they both agree that there's an issue around homeworks and breaks or vacation time and family time. So that's a really good place to start that conversation. Like, what is it that's so important there? And then how does that play out in terms of the time for workload? Because there's a really strong feeling about, and not just with staff, cause there are parents in this group too, we're preparing kids for rigorous work in college by doing this stuff. And then there are other kids that says, well, too much, you know, rigor is not, is not necessarily a lot. So I think that those are places to start the conversation, not to decide, this is going to decide for us what our parameters should be. I think we need to be really careful about that.
Excellent. Amy, Lindsay?
And, and another thought, and it, it's on that slide of yours, Amy, but I, I just, I'm thinking through how we take all of this, and people's thoughts and opinions that they had some afternoon when they did this, this activity, and really use that, but really incorporate and seep the community in what the research also tells us is best for kids. Um, cause opinions of, of staff, or parents, or students, I completed this survey as a parent, my kids completed it, right? Are all well and good, um, and, and they may be very strongly held by lots of people. But what, what is best for, for kids in terms of their educational output is sort of how, that's not, that's not part of this, I recognize that's another piece. But how do we have that piece be incorporated into the conversations? Cause if conversations continue based on your opinion or your experience, without bringing in some of what the uh, social science research might tell us is best for kids and their learning, and much of that gets us to an any better place than we maybe are right now.
I agree. So, um, principals have some research links, I think the question is, some school councils have done some diving into that, and some school councils haven't had the opportunity. Again, we did this in the spring, so just participating in the exchange was kind of as far as we got in that first cycle. And I think as we start looking at this data, we also need to revisit the importance of, so what is the research telling us is best practice? And think of those two things together. So these are some of those themes that emerged. I made them bigger so that you could see. This is a, a heat map that kind of looks at stakeholder groups and issues across groups. So you can see both parents and guardians and staff think about kind of the impact on um education and the importance of homework in, in terms of how that prepares kids long term. Um this is also a place where we could see that um agreement about weekends and vacations and homework and family time um being in conflict. Um but I think this is a, you know, an important thing. So put it in your calendar if you haven't already that uh the homework lady Kathy Vaterad is coming to Shrewsbury. Uh thanks to the Colonial Fund and the hard work of Michelle Biscotti and Kathleen Cohane. She has, is, you know, an expert on homework and has spoken across the nation and then, you know, internationally really on the topic. And so she brings a, a, an opinion that as always, when we bring in an expert, they can speak to the knowledge base. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're endorsing their perspective. Again, so the conversation is really critical. We have to strike that balance between what's working for us, what does the knowledge base say, what might we need to adjust? Because we might have a beautiful policy for K to eight, but if we're not following it, it doesn't do us any good. Um and that's the question, I think, about the K to eight piece. And then there's a separate conversation with the high school about what is appropriate, given the wide variety of workload by course selection. So again, these are some opportunities. The joint school councils is the next time we'll have a community conversation about some of these, this data and, you know, where we're headed next. And then I think we really do need to think about, how do we familiarize more people with this? Because it was, uh we had co- competing and really important committees underway last year. So the whole idea of a homework committee got tabled for thinking more broadly about how do we leverage existing groups to talk about this? Um and maybe that's something to warrant some further conversation. But I think, you know, between the faculty advisory groups, um between our opportunities to work with existing teacher teams and district leadership groups, we certainly have a lot of opportunities there to share this information. So um she's coming. I'm hoping that we'll see um participation, not just from families, but from staff. Um she's also available to do a workshop during the day on that. So I'm planning right now kind of how we'll structure that workshop. And then um just wanted to pause and see, are there any questions that you have now that didn't occur to you earlier?
Just one, a last one for me and that is that over the years, we've considered various innovations and learning. And one topic that has come up is this notion of what is referred to as a flipped classroom where the learning happens at home.
Yeah.
And, you know, the review occurs in class and I'm wondering if there is modeling for evolving in that direction going forward and we're simultaneously dialing down homework. Do those two things have the potential to bump into each other and cause a problem?
I can tell you that that was a concern that was shared on the, among the, the high school leadership. And also frankly, the different purposes of homework. I think the importance of having a flexible model because, you know, what you need in order to be successful in foreign language is gonna be really different from what you need from science and math, which is really gonna be a little bit different in terms of being able to flip a classroom. And so I, I think there is definitely that concern expressed among the high school leadership. But um, you know, I, kind of that gets to that purpose of homework, right? Do we have consistency in terms of that purpose? And, and maybe it's just articulating that there are several different purposes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Amy. I think you said to, you know, op- give people opportunities and it's not top down. I mean, we don't do top down here. I mean, we get a lot of input and homework is a very uh opinionated discussion for many of parent, myself included, when, you know, we look at homework for our children and what we think is right or wrong. So I, I think this is a great process to start. Um we've got a lot of data already to look at as we move forward. So thank you. And it's, it's just the beginning of what's gonna be along. And we don't make policies just, like you said, top down. We're gonna make sure it's right.
Yeah, I mean, we really value teacher decision making and teachers as being empowered to be flexible and to meet the needs of the students in front of them. So a, a homework policy that works for one class may not work for your next class. Um and I think we wanna make sure that we're really mindful about, again, what's working, because the high, high school does have guidelines, not necessarily a policy. And, and what is it that we wanna look at changing based on what we know about the research?
And I'm glad you talk about what's working because we don't wanna throw it away when there are really good pieces that we should continue, but maybe things that we can change and that will make it better for everyone. But it's a good process and it's a great start. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Doctor Sore, any comments or questions?
Just to reiterate, I, I think Ms. Clouder framing the issue is, you know, a conversation to get to, you know, reviewing what we're doing and what we may or may not adjust in result of best practice and, and uh, and, and also to look at, that it's not a problem to be solved. We don't have a crisis. Um we have people with strong opinions on, on different sides of, of the issue. So I think the approach is, is it, is a good one to use. Uh and I think that uh just to reiterate, you know, the original reason it came up and it's part of our strategic priorities is that when we did our initial thought exchange, which was about where should we go as a district, um homework came up as a topic that the community, um both staff and, and parents and, and students, all three of those groups wanted to see addressed as we worked through this five-year strategic plan. Um and we're about halfway through that period and, and we're ready to take this on and I'm looking forward to the process and the conversation and uh should be very interesting and ultimately I think we'll, we'll come to a, a stronger place as, as a result. And, you know, we don't know what, this is not, this is not preordained. We, we need to see how this all emerges and what makes sense and what makes sense for a framework um that our educators can operate within and that parents and students and educators all kind of understand the rules of the road um in terms of how we're supposed to, how we're approaching it um in Shrewsbury. So I appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we're gonna have a, a report from the Mr. Todd Bosidolo, Shrewsbury High School Principal and now Win, the Director of School Counseling. And we're gonna talk about the SHS Class of two thousand nineteen Future Plans Report.
Well, thanks for having us tonight. So we're happy to come to the committee before the committee and present our Future Plans Report. We'll try and keep this, uh, the eighteen-page report in your packet. Has a lot of data in it that certainly we're not gonna share with the entire community, but we certainly will be happy to answer any questions. We'll give the community an overview of, of the work that we've been doing and have done with the Class of two thousand nineteen. It gives a real good snapshot, I think, of uh the work in particular that uh now when our Director of School Counseling and her staff do with our students and families in the community. So a, a snapshot, a thumbnail of, of the success of the Class of two thousand nineteen. When we look at future plans, we typically look uh in our community, the number of students that attend two and four-year schools, but also the uh those students who participate in something other than a, a college track. So on this slide, we took four hundred and twenty-six students out of the four hundred and thirty-four in the net class. Eight of those students attained certificates of attainment. And eighty-five percent of the four twenty-six went on to four-year colleges, ten percent went on to the two-year college or technical school, while five percent entered the employment field, military, or were undecided. The five-year trend within this on the bottom right, you'd look, we're pretty much where we are every year. We're about eighty-five percent versus eighty-two last year, which was a little down to eighty-six. So we're hovering anywhere between eighty-eight percent in two thousand fifteen and eighty-five percent in twenty nineteen. And again, a pie graph on the bottom left just representing those percentages.
So when we look at the public and private um two and four-year matriculations, what we're really looking at um is in terms of the total students that are actually attending um college. Eighty-nine percent attended four-year colleges and um eleven percent attended two-year colleges or technical schools. So in terms of the public and private, we look at the fifty-eight percent attending public colleges and universities, whereas forty-two percent of the students attended private colleges and universities. So if you look at the top graph, we look at the public um and private college matriculations and the five-year trend. Um you can see this, this year there's a slight bump in terms of students choosing public schools over the private schools. And for the two years, it's pretty much the same. So it's the same trend.
We, we typically report on gender and just kind of give an idea. We have more females than males in our school. And the Class of two thousand nineteen had two hundred and forty-two females and one hundred and eighty-four males. And we just dis. By um gender. So as we look at the females on the top left, eighty-nine percent of that group, that cohort decided to go on a four-year college or university. Nine at a, nine percent of those students, two-year college or career education and two percent moving on to employment or other plans. While in male, we, male category, we had eighty percent attending four-year colleges. Uh two-year colleges at eleven percent for males and nine percent employment or other plans. In the bottom graphs, we'll show kind of the gender trends across a five-year span, uh left to right, total gender enrollment. A, a high of two hundred in two thousand fifteen and we're right in the, about the low of in two thousand sixteen of one hundred sixty-nine males. And now we're about one eighty-eight to around one eighty-eight hovering around one ninety for the last three years. The middle graph, the bar graph, around four-year college matric- matriculation, five-year gender. Females in the red and males in the blue. Last year we had seventy-five percent males, we're up five percent this year. Um but hovering around anywhere between seventy-five to eighty-five percent for males and uh ninety-two percent high and mid-eighties for females. The two-year college matriculation, bottom right graph, if you can see, the males are in that bluish purple color and the females are in the red. Um and we move across, they're, they're pretty typical numbers and generally speaking of what we've seen in the past years.
So this year we decided to look at a little bit um deeper into the application information in terms of looking at how students apply to colleges. So typically when we work with students, um we have students choose, uh choose schools to which they apply for three different categories. So usually we have students um choose possibly three reach schools, three target schools that are possibilities that they could get into, um according to the stats, and three likely schools. Typically people call them safety. We never call them safety because it's never like a sure thing. Um but certainly we, they're likely schools. So when you kind of add that up, you give a range, it's about three to ten, I'm sorry, nine to ten schools um that students typically we recommend for students to apply to. What's interesting this year, we kind of really broke that down because we're seeing an increase in student applications. So what I did was I um broke down looking at the top twenty-five percent of GPAs of students in terms of um how many applications that they applied to. So within the first twenty-five percent of GPAs, we have five students that applied to over twenty colleges. Um with the highest number is thirty-eight. We have eleven students that apply between fifteen and nineteen colleges. Thirty-four students apply between eleven to fourteen schools. So all, overall, we had about fifty students in that um one group apply to over ten schools. So we kind of really try to gauge um where students are at in terms of looking at um the reasons why they would want to apply to more than the typical recommended. And, and usually some students go over a little bit, which is okay too. So um then I also broke it down to the second group, the next um group down in the top, GPAs in the top twenty-six to fifty percent. Um in that group, we had two students apply to over twenty colleges with the highest being twenty-eight. Um we had eight students apply between fifteen to nineteen. We have fifteen students apply between eleven to fourteen applications. Overall, in that group, twenty-five students applied to over ten schools. Um what's interesting about that for, for us, from our perspective, is really looking at the intensity of the process. Um and the, the worry that students, and this is where when students talk about the stress level about where they could get in, um there's a real intensity towards that piece as well. Then I looked at early action. Um and this number keeps on growing each year. It gets higher and higher. So when we look at the number of students that are applying early action or early decision, um it's about a total of two hundred thirty-six. So when we look at deadlines for colleges, the typical um early action deadline is November first. Um and then you can look at the total number of applications. So by November first, we've already processed nine hundred thirty-five applications for students. Um what we're seeing in terms of trends this year, um over the past couple of years, I've seen the trends of some colleges asking for transcripts even earlier. So we're looking at an, an earlier process with some schools. This year I'm seeing an increase in um early action schools for October fifteenth. So that's, we've just been sta- um just ran through that deadline. So we're seeing it being earlier, so it, it kind of adds to a little bit of that anxiety and that hype about getting that in. So. Um so it's interesting in terms of looking at the number and the trends of um where students are at in terms of the schools that they choose to apply to, the number of schools and how early they're applying.
Certainly the twenty-six hundred and seventy-two applications is a, a ton of applications. And I think the School Counseling Department, how intensive it is speaks to the work they do with students and families. And again, kudos to that group for doing all this work and working with families. Uh I'm not entirely sure why um we have such, uh I don't wanna say disparity, but the range of applications. I think part of it's a lot of indecision, really uncertain of what you wanna do and where you wanna go. Ranging from geographic to program to all those things and trying to find the best fit. Certainly, in my opinion, I think the thirty-eight and the higher end of those applications is, that's pretty intense and it's probably a lot of stress there. But uh I wouldn't recommend um that number for, for everyone. That's, that's a extremely high number. Early action is non-binding. Early decision is binding. Um for students who are in that, in the, in the top of their class, if they wanna get a better understanding of where they wanna go immediately um and be binding, uh you're, you're in a pool with really, really competitive group of people first. But to get the yields from schools, if you know exactly where you wanna go, early decision is probably the way to go, but it's binding. You have to withdraw all your applications. So certainly a trend that we've seen an uptick here in Shrewsbury, but not a, a trend. I think it's been pretty typical across the country and particularly in eastern part of the state. This is a, a, a strategy for students to uh apply early or early action, early, early decision based upon their own personal metrics. So.
So when we look at the geographic breakdown of where our students are accepted and where they're attending, um we look at the, where students were accepted. They were accepted to two hundred fifty-nine different colleges and universities in three different states, thirty different states, um in three different countries. We look at where they actually enrolled. It's at one hundred twenty-eight different colleges and universities and they really does diversify it in twenty-eight different states, um in three different countries. So in terms of the graph, this is typical, what we see from year to year, most of our students do stay in New England. We do see more and more apply down south. The cost is, of attendance um is less than up in the northeast. Um we do always have a group of students who like to apply to the west coast, but when it really comes down to actually leaving, they, they stay a little bit closer, but some do venture out. When we look at the selectivity, we um look at that based on the Barron's Selectivity Guide, which is in that um graph that you see up there. Um so when we look at the um selectivity, we look at the most com- the percentage of most competitive, highly competitive, very competitive, competitive, less competitive. The special schools include um specific programs like art schools or health science schools um and then the two-year colleges. If you look at the selectivity year trend, the four-year trend, um what's interesting for this particular year is the highly competitive. You see that kind of shoot up to twenty percent this year. So um each year Barron's moves schools a little bit in terms of their accept, their acceptance rates, um looking at, at most competitive, highly competitive and within the very competitive range. Um this year UMass Amherst bumped up to the very competitive. So we have a lot of students that do attend there. But regardless of UMass Amherst, we also have an increase in nine students from last year that also bumped up to that, that number too.
We also like to report out the successes and where uh our students who've received special education services are, uh have reported out. The Class of two thousand nineteen, seven percent um of the total population, which is about thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three students. Fifty-nine percent of those students attended four-year colleges, nineteen percent attended two-year colleges and twenty-two entered the employment field and military. As we look at uh where they attended, breaking it down by public or private to give a better understanding, because some of these schools, private schools will have specialized services, specialized programming, um thirty-four percent of that group attended a private school, while a total of forty-four percent attended two-year, four-year public university, college or university and the twenty-two percent other across the board. Uh if you look, we had a high in two thousand fifteen of sixty-five percent of that population with uh the, the number of students receiving special education services at forty-six in that class. If you look at the trend across, this is one of the lowest number of students in recent years. A cohort of thirty-two is the smallest we've had in five years of students. And if you look at our special education services, they typically trend downward as they progress through our school, which is a good news story. they progress through our school, which is a good news story relative to special education programming. But across the board, relatively similar across, there is, again, if you look, there's been a dip around the two-year college where we're at forty-seven and forty percent in years past, forty-six, we're at nineteen. Hard to explain that trend to you, but something that we certainly have identified as something that we need to continue to look at.
And then, just looking at the senior exit survey, we ask a lot of different questions, but just to highlight a couple of the questions. Reasons for college selection, the top three reasons. Location has always been the top reason for students who want to stay a little bit closer to home. The cost of attendance is clearly a huge piece for families and students, and then the reputation of the school. So the reputation part, this has been consistent from year to year in terms of what students reported. In terms of the best source of information, you can see that the best source of information has been the individual meeting with school counselors. So they value that individual time to not just plan, but go through the whole application process and looking at essays and helping them to make those decisions. And then our in-class presentations with students, part of our curriculum is to push out information that we feel all students need. And then also our Naviance program where they really can do that career and college search, and we also push the applications and sending out transcripts through there as well. The one thing that I added this year is really looking at the stressor piece. We've been kind of monitoring that for the past few years. The top three of the academic grades for seniors, especially that they have to make sure that they maintain those grades because the transcripts are being sent with their applications. Meeting the deadlines, we do inform students that college deadlines, affirm deadlines. It's no, it's not a research paper where you can get an extension or a little bit of a late break. They're hard deadlines. And also, self-imposed pressure. We advise a lot of students to really try to pay attention to their own process, where we do kind of gauge that social pressure as well, but a lot of students do put that self-imposed pressure on them through this process.
We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Question?
Dale.
The issue of the performance of male versus female students and the fact that we have more females than male students, I assume that change occurs at ninth grade, that they're probably close to fifty-fifty until they hit ninth grade. Do the students that we have that go to vocational high school, do we track their results with this, or are they off the cohort when they go to vocational school?
They'll be off our cohort.
Okay. And so is it fair to say, then, that it is likely that the males who are leaving our system in ninth grade are probably going to college prep schools of one sort or another?
Sure. I mean, there's a variety of schools, whether it's secular schools or a trade, folk, tech school, or
Right.
some sort of, yeah, private school, or non-secular private school as well.
Besides the gender difference, there may, we may well be witnessing some selection process that goes on that may affect the results regarding the males that remain in our system.
Sure.
Just more of an anecdotal question than something that's necessarily captured in your data when you and your team talk with students. Obviously, cost of an education is the second leading factor you have. What level of understanding do students who are looking to finance an education have, or what level of information, I'm wondering if you can elaborate, is provided to them? Obviously, many, if not most, students take out loans to fund an education, and I'm curious about the level of understanding that they have as to what a repayment is going to look like and how much that's going to impact their lives after having earned that degree.
In terms of particular, like individual students, I don't think they are as well educated. So when we push out financial aid nights and financial aid information, it's mostly parents that attend. I must say, this year, we've had the most students in attendance that I have seen, and even the speaker that came to talk was impressed by the number of students that attended. And we do encourage students, but I think when you really drill down to the numbers, I'm not sure how much they really fully understand, although the presentation that we have is shared, we share it directly with the students in their school resources and inform them to not only look at the slides, but we also videotape a recording that they can also go back to take a look as well. A lot of the financial piece, I know when I do the college planning nights and I talk about looking at the best fit, there's also, there's a, we look at the academic fit, the social fit, but there's a financial fit that I talk about as well. And that's, I encourage students and families to talk together because sometimes those conversations aren't happening, so it makes it difficult when students are applying and trying to choose schools. And that's individual by families. I know it's something that means they are hesitant to share that information, even after financial aid night, when we have parents that come up and ask questions. So sometimes, we see that, too. So it depends on that, but we do try to encourage as much as possible to have that conversation within the home.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dale.
I'm curious about the special education young people, and I wonder if you've ever thought about or have had the opportunity to look at the breakout of those students by level of need or level of service in which they're receiving, because I think about, my initial gut inclination as a parent is, I would love every student to go to four years of school, and then I think, is that the right thing? Like, what are we messaging and what are we saying is success for everybody? And it shouldn't, it's not a one-size-fits-all? And so it's just, it's a question I have, it doesn't need an answer, but as a district going forward, when we think particularly about some of our potentially more vulnerable students as they leave sort of the nest of high school, thinking about how those break out by that level of need. Are we seeing young people with, you know, in their last year of high school, they're still receiving really high levels of need, and they're not going on to another sort of, we could talk, we could think about higher education as a little bit more of a supportive setting than going right into the workforce. I'm not sure that's totally true. But it would be, I'm curious, and I wonder, maybe you have some, even some anecdotal thoughts of those thirty-two young people?
Sure. So we certainly recommend, in terms of what the students are ready for, is what we work with the specialized liaisons and the teachers and the counselors all work together to kind of help plan for what those options are. So for those students, it would depend on, like you said, the level of need. Some students do go on to four-year colleges, some do go on to two-year colleges. A number of students, we do recommend either four-year or two-year, that they make sure that they access the services at the colleges, just to make sure that, because we have to encourage them, once a student turns eighteen, when they step foot on college, they have to self-identify with the schools. So we try to engage in that. And just anecdotally, there are students that I have worked with that we even work on the transportation, on how they navigate to college and how they navigate from class to class. So it would depend on the level of support. It's so individual, but we certainly try to tackle that individually with the student and as a team, too.
Thank you.
A couple of things. One is that I think we're at a point in time where there is so much publicity regarding college debt, that the audience may be much more sensitized than they have been in the past and more receptive to the message. I wonder, most important messages are worth repeating over and over again, and I'm wondering if we should start the discussion regarding debt and financing college education in ninth grade or something like that and just plow through with it every year. I also, I simply don't know the answer as to what the net cost is for private versus public, because there's also a discussion about the fact that the financial aid for students with certain profiles may be such that going to a private school may actually be less expensive than a public. I just don't know the answer to that, but. And the third comment has to do with regard to counseling parents. I suspect that the parents who have never been to college have a very different set of needs with regard to understanding the value proposition, understanding the meaning of various career choices. I think college in itself becomes a goal, and just getting their child into college and then the decisions the child makes may not be particularly good for that child from a point of view of a career, but the parents may not have the same savvy as those who have been through the system before. So I just wonder whether offering sessions for parents who have not been to college themselves would be of value.
Sure. One of the things that we have been talking about, kind of in conjunction of what we do with our parent breakfast program, we actually changed, our last parent program used to be, we had a college admissions rep come and just talk about the college process, and we actually changed the title to be the American College Process for families who have not experienced the American College System. That's probably one of the most well-attended parent breakfasts that we have each year, and we have an admissions person that really talks those parents through that process. One of the things that we have been talking about within our department is having a like program, but more of an evening program for parents to access, for parents who have never been to college, and looking at that process a little bit differently. So we've been in the talks of sometime in the spring, in the same time that we do that program for families who have experienced college from outside of the country, but doing it sort of the same time so that they can attend both. It depends on their situation, but we have been in the talks about that.
That's great.
For an evening program, just to make sure parents can access it, because with the parent breakfast, not our parents can access it because of work. So we're trying to look at ways to be flexible when people are available for that.
Thank you.
I have a question on test-blind. Are we seeing an increase in schools who are test-blind with SAT and ACTs, or is it evening out?
That continues to increase.
Okay.
We do continue to see that increasing. One of the things that's very interesting in the past year or so, what a colleges, a lot of colleges are doing is they're allowing students to self-report test scores. So after they are, after they've applied, been accepted, decide to attend, then they can send their test scores. They just have to make sure they're accurate, and we drill that into them. But that's been a relatively new thing for schools that are still requiring the test scores. We are seeing a big trend going that route, just to save students money in terms of sending out those test scores to multiple schools. But it also makes the wait a little bit less in having, not having those official scores.
Interesting. The other question I had, you talk about school counseling programs, and I think, you know, you left that out of your report. You do a lot of that, and there's a lot of really good programs for students and parents. One question I had, have you thought about taking, I'm thinking from my own experience and from what I've heard from other parents, the nuts and bolts and the financial aid. We do that in the beginning of senior year?
The, yes.
So is there any thought of maybe pushing that back to junior year? Because I think when we're in the fall, there is so much going on, and having that information might be helpful earlier than right when you're in the midst of it, especially when we're talking about, you know, the financial piece of it and then just that whole application process. Is there any thought of maybe shifting that? I don't know if you've ever?
I, one thing that I have thought about for the financial aid part, having that being open to both juniors and senior families, because there's certainly some benefit. A lot of times, the presenters do talk about where are you in the process, and if you have one more year, these are things for you to think about. The nuts and bolts will be a little bit more difficult because we are really talking about that application process right in the here and now.
Okay.
So that would still be a senior process, but definitely, the financial aid, I think, can be opened up. Some schools do it in the spring, so it depends now. I think things are going earlier and earlier, but it definitely doesn't hurt for parents and students to hear it twice.
Oh, exactly.
Because it's so much information. The only part that, you know, may be a little bit more difficult for people to digest because they're not filling out the forms, is when they talk about the actual filling out the forms part, so.
Great. Thank you.
Dale?
Just with regard to the push to have all of these applications, for example, the top twenty-five percent were applying to so many schools. I'm assuming that most of that increase in the number of schools that they're applying to are the reach schools. They're not putting that into the likely schools. But we know what schools they are accepted at, we know what schools they matriculate at. The other number is what schools they apply to. So if someone knew that, you know, one in a hundred of our applicants to Harvard got in, that may affect their decision-making as to whether they wanted to check off that box for an application or not. And I'm just wondering if perhaps that's a bit of reality regarding their likelihood of getting in from Shrewsbury High.
So that information is readily available in Naviance. Naviance actually holds our data for, I know, at least ten years of where students have been accepted, who is denied, who is waitlisted. And so we have it, you can, we work with students in looking at it two ways. There's a scattergram that can, that shows actual students in terms of their GPA and test scores, and it also shows it by school, too. We can look at it as a list. So that information is readily available. And we also, when we actually, next month, our parent breakfast is going through the Naviance program, we also show parents how they can access that information, too.
That's great.
Anything else? Dr. Sawyer?
Yeah, just to reiterate that piece of it, I think there was something in the report, perhaps, that said that that was one of the things that students found most helpful in terms of some of the decision-making around application is the scattergram piece and seeing, you know, likelihood of acceptance, essentially. And I think the balance, of course, is around, you know, not just taking that as gospel either, because we know, especially as we heard, I know, when we were doing our strategic planning, when we heard from some admissions counselors, that there is more of a movement even among some of the larger schools to take a more holistic approach to their applications and with more test-optional schools, not to just base it on GPA and test scores, but there's other elements of it, so not to, you know, not apply someplace because it hasn't been favorable in the past, but at the same time, having a realistic idea as well in terms of that it's a good balance of those pieces to have that data. Thank you very much for the report. I think, again, as I mentioned to the student advisory committee earlier, I'm on both sides of the equation now as a parent of a senior and going through the process as a family for the first time. We found the information, the application boot camp, the different pieces for counseling, and the approach, and I continue to appreciate the fact that, and I remember being at Nuts and Bolts night and when talking about all those different dimensions of fit that families really need to consider, and I think that's very good advice for families to get, and I think that, anecdotally, talking with families over the last several years, talking with Ms. Zillo and his team, and hearing those conversations about how families have made decisions about attending a state school versus a private school where they may have gotten into because of the financial factor, or, hey, you can get a really great deal potentially for merit, and sometimes there are certain schools that are particularly giving good packages to students from Shrewsbury High School, and it's actually making it more affordable than even a state option might be, or a public option. So it's very, it's a very complex issue, but I think there's a lot of good information and supports, and of course, the counselors themselves, and with the numbers of applications, you know, really appreciate the work that the counseling department does. We're very pleased that the school committee supported the addition of an additional counselor this year, so we were able to spread the workload out a little bit more among the counseling staff, which is important, given the increase in student population we've had as well. But thank you for the information and for the work, and much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we are going to look at the school committee fiscal year 2021 budget priorities and guidelines draft. Dr. McGee and Ms. Heffernan are the school committee subcommittee for this, and they work with Mr. Collins. So Dale, are you kicking this off?
Well, these are just high-level guidelines that go over, first of all, the goals of our budget, what we feel is so important that we must maintain, what goals we think are important to aspire to. The fact that we are also trying to be prudent with our resources and to signal to the community the fact that the tax base is not the only place we're looking for resources, and we're also signaling that we are looking for better ways to inform the public regarding our budgeting process and what the budget looks like. So there are a number of factors that are in here. I think the other piece is the notion of putting forward a status quo budget as well as the additional resources that we would like to see to help us maintain our goals. So we tried to express all of these things in as concise a document as we could so that we can basically let the public know just what our priorities so that we can, um, basically let the public know just what our priorities are and how we go about doing business.
Excellent. Lindsay, any comments?
I would certainly echo those of, of Dr. McGee, and I think it's the sharing with the community not only what our priorities are, but all of the assumptions that go into a significant piece of work to, to create the budget, um, i- is, is an important thing for us to, to be clear out about and to message. Um, I think the one added piece that I would just stick on to, um, what has already been said is, for us, um, in our suggestions, a part of the budgetary priorities, um, that we not lose sight of some of the work that was done, uh, last school year, um, by the Collins Center, um, thinking about our central office, and, and the district has grown, there's lots of stressors there, um, and so that that's certainly included, an included piece here, which is new from prior years, because it's a new, new piece of work for us, but, um, that that, we, we know, we know we've grown in ways that have put some stressors on, um, our, our central office organization, so that you'll, you'll find that in there as well.
Mr. Collins, do you have anything to add?
I would add, excuse me, just, uh, two things. One is that, um, as was stated, it's, uh, it's a statement piece by the school committee for the larger community. Uh, it's also, as it says here, it's designed to provide guidance to the superintendent of schools and the school department administration regarding the development of its initial fiscal twenty-one budget. So, it's a guidance document, uh, for us as well, and these assumptions are very important, and, uh, committee members pointed out, uh, highlighted several of them. Uh, I, I would just highlight another one of them, uh, which is important, uh, kind of moving forward, that, uh, the assumption that we're operating under is that due to space constraints, that, uh, there, there would be a vote at some point in this, uh, near future that there would be no new school choice seats for the upcoming school year as well. So, that's just another facet, another example of the assumptions of which there are many here, um, that we're operating under.
Excellent, thank you. Any comments? Jason?
I support the recommendations as presented to us this evening for something as complicated and occasionally convoluted as the process of budgeting for our district can be. I think that this is a fairly clear, articulate statement of values and goals. Uh, I thank the subcommittee for their work on this, and if adopted, I certainly encourage the community to read this, and I encourage us all to push this out to the community at large. I think as we deal with all of the nuts and bolts of budgeting and the changing, uh, figures that are, that play out over that process that obviously unroll, unravels over a few months, I think sometimes it's easy to lose sight of our goals, and I, I encourage folks to take a look at this, which again, I think is just a very understandable, um, clear outline of where it is we'd like to go with this process.
Yeah, I, I agree, and thank you to the subcommittee for, you know, taking a look at this, kind of distilling what we need to do and how, you know, these assumptions and, and the guidance that we're going to use as we go through the budget process. I think it's very well done, and, um, again, highlights what, what we need to do and what we need to think about in a very large budget. Lindsay?
One thought I'm just, just having it now is, um, how do we, how, what are our roles and responsibilities as a committee and as a district to think about how to put this in the context of the sort of daily breaking news around education funding in the state, um, which, you know,
Mm-hmm.
That we know that the State House is doing, doing some work, um, on that, and so, I'm not sure what that should look like, but, um, but, uh, I mean, we have had some conversations about how that doesn't, that's unlikely to change much of how we, how we tend to operate, and if anything, is some, some, some crumbs at the margin here. But, given the conversation in, in the media and what people might think and what is our reality, we probably have a little, a little extra communication work to do, um, over the course of this fall, and as, you know, obviously as we learn more about what that looks like. So, that's not necessarily related to this document, but just thinking generally about how we communicate about all of this and what, um...
And, and I think you raise a good point, because there is some uncertainty, and as we move through the budget process and the state does it as well, we hopefully will get some more clarity around those issues, and I think that will be part of that conversation. Uh, we talk about budget year-round now, it's really not just a budget season anymore.
And if I just add on to that, certainly to Ms. Heffernan's point, as we've all experienced, um, media coverage of any legislation that's passed will probably deviate significantly from how it will actually impact functionality of districts statewide, so I agree with that point.
All right. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
Uh, no, I think it's a strong document. I think it gives clarity to the administration, uh, as we develop the initial superintendent's budget, um, proposal, which will come in late January, early February, um, and it's also a good document to signal to the community. Um, as in past years, uh, we will post this on our website. Uh, the community has an opportunity to, if they have any thoughts about it, provide feedback to the committee, um, and we'd ask that you, uh, vote to, uh, support whatever final version, uh, is presented, uh, at your next meeting, which is October thirtieth.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, our, uh, approval of minutes from the school committee meeting held on October second, two thousand and nineteen. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at them. Are there any changes, corrections? There being none, we'll have those marked as approved by the committee. And if there is nothing further on the agenda tonight, I'll have, um, ask that there be a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Mr., Dr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Ballage.
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan.
Aye.
Myself.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.[1744.42]